Good evening. Welcome to the Halifax Board of Selectmen Meeting, October 8th, 2019. All selectmen except for Tom Millius, personal business tonight, won't be attending. First thing on the agenda is a pledge of allegiance. You join me?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gordon, it's on you, young man.
Okay.
First of all, you, any changes in the agenda?
No. The selectmen minutes, do you have those for me, sorry?
I do, I'll get them for you after. I got the selectmen, they're inside, well, the executive session ones are inside your folder.
Okay.
And the other ones are in your storage folder. So, well, I'll get them beside, you can sign them tonight, but forward later.
Okay.
Okay, so you just look at it.
So, I move to approve the selectman meeting minutes of the regular session from August 13th, 2019, executive session June 25th, 2019, executive session July 9th, 2019, executive session July 23rd, 2019, session A, executive session August 13th, 2019, session B.
I'll second those. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Okay, I move, sorry.
No, Greg, no, sorry.
I move to affirm approval of the following warrants and commitments. Payroll warrant number 28 for $378,018.60. Vendor warrant number 29 for $32,593.49. Withholding warrant number 30 for $140,775.93. Ambulance commitment from September 16th to September 22nd, 2019 for $33,831.33. And ambulance commitment from September 23rd to September 29th, 2019 for $6,580.25.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. I move to approve the following warrants and commitment. School warrant number 31 for $347,805.99. Vendor warrant number 32 for $1,476,701.50. Mobile home parking fee number 10 for $5,160.
I'll second those. All in favor?
Aye. I move to approve the payment of selectman bills dated October 8th, 2019. So, selectman expense, $136.76 to WB Mason. $34 for recruitment, employment, and training for an ad for the Associate, uh, sorry, for the Library Associate Youth Services. $70 for the Law Line for the updated law book subscription via the internet. And $185 from the selectman expense account for the MMA annual meeting. And from the Law Line, $2,123 to Michael Gilman.
They completed? I'll second those. All right, any further discussion? All in favor? We'll go to the mail at this time. Elementary school renovations project change order number three. Re-insulation of ceiling electric items has cost $9,182. And credit for spray foam insulation work was done on minus $1,015.81. A net of $8,166.19. Charity recommends that we approve, he's already reviewed these.
Okay, so make a motion to approve the change order number three for total cost of $8,166.19?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Property liability policy update. I've upped the limits for our equipment from $100,000 to $250,000. With a $1,000 deductible cost of $687. That's within our budgets. Recommendation by Charlie that we approve.
Okay, so make a motion to approve the expenditure of $687 to increase the property liability coverage.
Okay. Consular Agent Airmark Grant?
Yes, second.
I'm second. All in favor?
Aye.
Consular Agent Airmark Grant, Consular Agent received $25,000 from fiscal here. 20 state budget for general consolation purposes. The CLA intends to work with the building committee to work on improvement outside handicap access parking lot and driveway. The money will have to be used by June 30th, 2020. We've already filed paperwork with the state. So, that's just for your information. Waterman document and grievance settled, filed with labor relations, no harm, no foul. Things highway union members relate to open meeting, of course, then. Diane Smith wrote a very nice note about her work and Lydia Materna does it, Consular Agent. So, we should maybe send a letter to kudos to Lydia.
Good.
Thanking her for her good work. We have an agreement that needs to be signed for the annual agreement to sign, which carries October 22nd. As I am, Board of Health, Animal Inspector, Animal Control, as far as I know, there haven't been any problems with Lakeville. And the reason we are sharing it with Lakeville is because we don't have a pinning area to hold animals. Once we've, so we need to vote to sign that contract.
Is that the contract? Oh, so I make a motion to approve the contract with the Lakeville Animal Shelter?
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
There's two spots, there's two pages.
Munpan Sidpan, I'm sorry, Walnut Street traffic, truck traffic. Harold Sprague intends to submit a citizen petition article at town meeting for $20,000 for training of an officer. And equipment at payroll for hours of coverage. I've notified the police chief and I'm looking at the possible events, knowing speed cameras for which town can send out letters to drivers indicating they were speeding, but no tickets. That might give the town sufficient reason to set up meeting with compliance. Chief, how do you feel about that?
Which, which option? The citizen's article or the cameras?
Either.
Well, like, I had some conversation with Charlie and I think the first step is to find a volunteer. It's, it's one of those specialty jobs that you, you know, you need to have a love to be, you know, to inspect vehicles. That you kind of want to be a mortarhead, use that term. It's difficult, you know, to, to invest $20,000 to send an officer for training. If the officer, first of all, doesn't want to do it, you can do it, because then he's going to come back and, and just kind of go about, you know, driving around, basically. And then if we find somebody to do it, the investment back to the town, you know, is on the number of citations that are written for these trucks. I mean, I, myself personally have conducted traffic in rail enforcement on Walnut Street. And the, the times that we do it, the first few, few trucks will drive by, and after that, you won't see any, any truck the rest of the day.
They get on the radio.
They get on the CV and then they take a different route. When we had Officer Eldridge from East Bridgewater do a vehicle enforcement, he was, he has the authority to basically pull the trucks over, which, for just for general inspection, which we can't. We get to see a violation. So, I believe that day, he issued four citations. Two of them were for just normal trucks, nothing of the oversized Mr. Sprague is complaining about. It's very difficult, I, you know, I understand his frustration, but even if a truck is going down Walnut Street doing 30, 35 miles an hour, it feels like he's doing 50, 60 miles an hour just because of the, the size of the vehicle and all the wheels, you know, making contact with the pavement. So, it's, we've, they've tried in the past, you know, speaking with Bridgewater, Police Bridgewater, about doing a detour. They're not in favor of it, so it's kind of something outside the box. I mean, the camera thing is an option, but then what if, you know, if I made business in Halifax, in Bridgewater, I'm going to come here to, you know, to the Halifax Water Selectmen and be told, you know, tell you guys not to speed? There's no enforcement behind it, there's no, no way to enforce that, that speeding violation. So, I, I think it's.
Well, it's within his right.
Yeah.
It's Greg's right to get a petition, we'll, we'll address it at town meeting, but thank you for your.
You're welcome.
Your take on it. Munpan Sidpan, airmark, the town is receiving $125,000 for work before June 20th, June 30th, 2020, waiting for the public health to send contract documents. So, we haven't signed on yet, but it sounds like good news. They just, they was auto back taxed, no need for any action. Halifax Beautification Committee have been the booth, as part of the cleanup data, committee would like to host a vendor selling products that help reduce the amount of plastic and other waste on our streets. You have any opinions on there, Gordon?
I'm fine if they want to set up a booth, do we have to make a motion to?
Did they say where they were going to set the booth up, though? That's the only thing my concern is. Where's the booth going to be?
All right, hold on. What do they do? They send something in? I'm not sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I, I have no objections to setting a booth, but the only thing my concern is where's it going to be someplace going to be out of the way or cause traffic problems, whether we need any police presence. If you could. I have in front of me a new talent bank. I haven't had an opportunity to really review this.
You want to just hold off until the next meeting?
I think so.
Okay.
Okay. There's been a proposed sign at the elementary school. School would like to put up a new sign. Near the tennis court, the recreation field, I have any problems with the sign, I didn't want the board to retain its jurisdiction or the school grounds. I don't have any problem with it for the sign up, are they going to remove the other sign now?
I think that when they showed us the picture, it's down closer to the tennis courts near the big tree that's still left up there. That's where they wanted to put it.
Okay. We're just about 7:45. And we have some swearing in to do tonight. Are you upset? Thank you. He's got a military look on his face.
Okay.
Chief?
Good evening. So, I'm here today in front of the board for two special occasions. First, I'd like to bring Officer Andrew Lozinski up in front of the board to be sworn as a member of the Halifax Police Department. Andrew began his career with the department in March 2018. He was given a waiver as a full-time officer in February of 2019. Entered the police academy in Plymouth where he successfully graduated on August 31st, 2019. Andrew was a distinguished student officer, earning praises and accolades from both the staff and fellow academy mates. E earned the position of squad leader and led his squad in exemplary fashion. As recently as today, another chief of police came up to me at a conference and spoke on how much Officer Lozinski had impressed him at the academy. He must have been doing something right to make that kind of impression with, with the chief. Officer Lozinski has been working the four midnight shift, serving his community, and is performing quite well. The residents of Halifax should be proud to have such a dedicated professional and community-minded police officer serving their needs. Officer Lozinski, we're gaining, we'll swear you in. The board has asked questions of you before.
You're going to repeat and ask me, okay? It's a long one.
He said he knew my heart, so maybe you want to test him. He said this was so good times.
Whoever's going to get the best pictures of you, from your feet.
Yeah, without me being in it.
Like that, you want to stay like that or a little switch sides?
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance. That I will bear.
That I will bear.
True faith and allegiance.
Truth, faith, and allegiance.
And uphold and defend.
And uphold and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And that I will fairly and equitably.
And I will fairly and equitably.
Execute and enforce.
Execute and enforce.
The laws thereof.
The laws thereof.
Within the extent of my authority and jurisdiction.
Within the extent of my authority and jurisdiction.
State in name, aye.
Aye, Andrew Lozinski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me.
Discharge the duty.
And perform.
And perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
For the Halifax Police Department.
For the Halifax Police Department.
And I will obey and be bound by.
And I will obey and be a bound, be bound by.
Such rules of government. Such rules.
Such rules of government.
And government of the Halifax Police Department.
And the Halifax Police Department.
Aye.
Aye, Andrew Lozinski.
Hereby accept the position.
Hereby accept the position.
A police officer.
A police officer.
And the police department.
And the police department.
Of the town of Halifax.
Of the town of Halifax.
You also.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I know a lot of it works.
Congratulations. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Wasn't that easy? Want to get a picture with your parents up there?
Yeah.
Yeah, please, please do.
Yeah.
Get him for a good picture.
There you go.
Do you want to be in?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
We expect great things of you.
Back to work.
Break time's over.
All right. So, the second thing that we're here today for is not really a swim in, it's more of a promotion type thing. So, I just want to say a few words about our next officer who is here tonight to be recognized by the board and the rest of the community service. Officer Robert McDonald began his career with the Halifax Police Department in April 2010. Throughout his career with the department, Officer McDonald has distinguished himself not only with his excellent police work, but with his dedicated service to the residents of Halifax. He has always strived to make himself a better officer to continue his service to the community. Officer McDonald became a member of the Semleye Surgeon Rescue Team. He's assisted in finding lost children, missing persons, and recovering evidence. Officer McDonald is a member of the Old County Anti-Crime Task Force, where in conjunction with state police and other departments, he conducts narcotics investigations throughout Plymouth County. He is the department's sexual offender registry board representative and conducts all follow-up investigations on sexual assaults that are reported to the Halifax Police Department. I feel that Officer McDonald has the skills needed to make a great investigator. A few weeks back, Halifax suffered several shed breaks where ATVs and dirt bikes were stolen. I asked Officer McDonald to do some follow-up on these cases. Within days, he identified a suspect, corroborated the information with another department, and requested warrants for the arrest of the suspect, a New Bedford resident. It is the type of work, ethic, and thinking outside of the box that I feel will show Officer McDonald well in his career. As you can see, he is one busy officer, and I can't think of anyone better to have here before you to receive his promotion to the regular detective. I would like Officer McDonald to come up and receive his detective's badge. Congratulations.
Thanks, chief.
You have a speech?
Oh, good, go ahead.
You going to take pictures with the family up here?
Sure. Troy, one, two, three, boy. Says, you guys come, come up here.
Yeah, yeah, come.
Because we got, we got to put him on our Facebook, on our Facebook page. Saddest, saddest girl.
You got the marine in there too?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Good job. Congratulations.
Thanks, chief.
Do good work, appreciate it.
Thanks, chief.
All right, guys. Thank you, congratulations.
Have a good night, guys.
Mike, it's good seeing you.
Guys, I'll see you around.
No, well, I tell you to stand in front of what I like.
Good seeing you.
Nice to see you.
Good seeing you.
All right, congrats. Always seeing.
I will.
I'm sure you'll be seeing my brother. I'd rather get to kick out of it. Yeah, well, he hates all the rich, you know.
Troy, would you mind going back to the sign? I guess we need to, we need to vote it.
We get a vote, is that it?
Was that what you, that's what you said?
Oh, no, well, you know what, you can dial me, you can see it says the board maker used to carry this home on October 22nd to have a tombo on this whole.
Yeah, well, we have, we're over here when we do it.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay. Does that back?
Okay, we have one more thing to sign for the green, green communities, Old County Planning Council contract.
Okay, right, yes, right. And it just appears that it just.
My signature?
Just one signature, so.
I need a motion to sign the paperwork for Old County Green Community Project.
I make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, chief. And we have an ambulance abatement? For August of 2019, $109,751.40.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The firefighters local 3159 would like to auction off a raffle off a snow blower for fundraiser. Especially, the approval letter significantly states that permission is granted only this function. We need to agree on the letter be sent to them agreeing to them raffling off a snow blower.
So, you got to vote to have a lot of sense, is that it?
They want, they want to display it at the, it's the station itself, I don't have any problem with that. Okay, all of them.
Troy made the motions in the letter.
All in favor?
Aye.
VHB is Stormwater, affirmed contracts with VHB for Stormwater work for fiscal 2020, $67,330. Money will come from the town fiscal line budget. I'll move it.
Contract?
Yeah, I think you guys just got to affirm it, though, I think he said.
I move it.
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Unfortunately, sad news is that Jack Mather, who was our representative for Old County Planning Council for years past, in the last few weeks, and we're now looking for applications from the public for someone who would like to serve at the town's delegate for the Old County Planning Council at the present time and alternate, but we're looking for somebody from the public to serve as our representative. So, if you have an application, you may have a talent form that you can fill out or reaches at the town hall concerning the selectmen's office concerning the position. Matthew Donohue is now the part-time school liaison officer at the middle school, no action needed, just announcement. Comcast bill explanation, Michael Gallow of Comcast wrote, "Have looked into this and it's not something that we put on our bills and did not rely asking for more information." So, we still haven't got an answer to our question as to how the bills are put together. Municipal climate summit, remind of this event Saturday, October 19th, 1:00 p.m. to 3:30 p.m., Bay State College, 101 Industrial Park Road, first floor town. I'm not going to be attending that.
I won't be able to, you know.
Jonathan Sorocco resigned from the planning board. Effective immediately.
I think Charlie just got that today. I guess, yeah, it was today.
Well, I'd like to send him a letter of thanks for serving the town as long as he did. Is there a motion?
Make the motion, send him a thank you.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Geez, we're getting a lot of resignations here. John Delano, who's been on the Board of Health forever, is retiring November 6th. So, we would like to put out anyone interested in running for that position that will be available on a temporary basis until the election in May.
I would make a motion to send a thank you letter to Mr. Delano for the number of years that he served the town as a member of the board.
It's been a long time. I, I agree. All in favor?
Aye.
We have a software licensing agreement between the police department and PMAM Corporation for Human Capital Management. Three years, October 2019 to October 2022, for $2,778.75. I guess the only signature needed is the chair, so I could vote on that.
So, moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
There's a new facility survey that we have made available to see where our departments are right now, and we need, uh, each one of these will be passed all the department heads to give us an outline of what their needs are, projecting for the next five or 10 years, where we're going to need the monies. Just an announcement.
Yep.
That was for that, uh, software licensing agreement.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
You sign where I said you should.
Uh, it's eight o'clock, by my watch at least, and we have two gentlemen here to talk.
Zarnowski?
Sure.
Awesome. I'm Rich Zarnowski, and this is Alex Mazin.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
One of these.
Um, I'll also open up my laptop if that's okay, so then we can kind of zoom in.
I'll put it on your lap and that mine, we're good.
Got it. We'll keep it on the table, promise.
Did you get one for Tom?
Okay, so this is, uh, this facility, we just drew the contract after the last one.
So I'll let you guys know, you should never be selected in Weston. You run way too, you know, good, good a meeting, you know, you're very... Weston, it's just chaos.
Well, that's not nice. Volunteer for the job, what, they pay you $100,000 a year over there?
In Weston, yeah, they get extra.
I was head of recreation for 20 years in Weston. I never get a letter when I finish. You know, it's very nice that you do that.
Well, you know, volunteer is very valuable to our run over our government. If we have people that are civic-minded coming in to do the type of things they did, we could operate.
Right.
There's no way we're gonna be in more than one place. Well, I could be in two places. Gentlemen?
Yes. So, uh, my name's Alex Mazin, CEO and founder of Bud's Goods and Provisions. We've been, I originally grew up in Worcester. This is Greg Zarnowski, our VP of Community Relations. We've been here, we've been a part of the medical marijuana industry since 2016 here in the state of Massachusetts. And tonight, what I'd like to discuss is an opportunity, um, off of River Street at 111 River Street, which was formally presented to the board...
Four daughters.
By four daughters. That's correct. And they ended up walking away from the, from the opportunity for a handful of reasons. And so when the opportunity presented me, it seemed like the right fit for what we were striving to achieve. So this evening, I'd like to walk you through the presentation that I put together, kind of giving you a high-level overview of our company.
Before we go any further, um, where are you located now? Where are you doing business?
We have a, so in 2016, and I'll get into this right on the next page, um, in 2016, we were actually approved, one of the 100 medical approval licenses by the Department of Public Health, and that was in Lakeville, Massachusetts, so right next door. We're located at 475 Kenneth Welch Drive in their industrial park. We were awarded the provisional certificate of registration back in 2016. As you know, question four on the adult, on the ballot, 2016 approved adult use, and so we started to also pursue those efforts because we, I personally saw the regulations and how they were much more favorable to adult use and very harmful to the medical market. But I won't bore you with those things. That's a, that's a state-level thing, uh, we're working on as we speak. To date, we also have four additional licenses with the state from the Cannabis Control Commission. One is a cultivation license in Lakeville, one's a product manufacturing license in Lakeville, and Lakeville, one's a retail license in Lakeville, and we were fortunate enough to get another retail location in Worcester, Massachusetts, where I grew up. Since being in this industry, uh, there's one thing that I have learned that is a big problem for our industry and the impact our industry can have on the environment, and that comes down to cultivation. It's not sustainable what the state of Massachusetts is currently doing in making operators, not making, but appearing to, uh, go in the direction that indoor cultivation is A, sustainable, B, environmental, and C, socio-economically viable. It's none of those things. And so in 2000, a little over a year ago, I decided to basically push off the pursuit of building an indoor cultivation facility. And what I've done, what I've done is, on this slide, I've tried to outline why I don't think, uh, indoor cultivation is the right approach for our market standalone, meaning it can't only be indoor. It needs to be a hybrid of multiple different growing methods to sustain what the state is going to need on the, on a supply-demand basis. And so the first issue, obvious, is environmental impact. It takes 200 pounds of coal to grow one pound of cannabis indoors. Now, you might say, "We don't operate on coal, we operate on natural gas." You can imagine what that means on natural gas level. It's not sustainable to build and grow an indoor climate for plants. A greenhouse, yes, that is more environmentally efficient, and Four Daughters did present that model, which is a significantly better step in the right direction. But the big impact on that is the impact on the land, the building of the structure. All those things have a drastic environmental impact. And so obviously, what does that mean? Higher use of fossil fuels, higher impact of carbon emissions, greenhouse gases. That's an obvious one. I, I hope we can all agree on that one. The second part to this is the extreme costs to do indoor or greenhouse cultivation. Indoor cultivation, we learned that it's about $500 a square foot to build, meaning if you're gonna build a small facility by industry standards, which is about 20,000 square feet, that is over a $10 million investment because you are building a facility that basically could, you could control every aspect of it to mimic an outdoor environment. That comes at a very drastic cost because it's highly demanding on electrical and other utilities such as natural gas, water, things like that. So that was the second largest issue. And as we started to dig in more into indoor cultivation, all those things, the larger costs, the environmental impact comes down to one thing, the social impact that indoor cultivation has, which means prices will remain high, and it will be unsustainable for our market for everybody in this market to participate in, in a legal fashion. How are we doing?
Good. Thank you, son.
Quite a bit.
Yeah.
And so my belief is that if we do not allow outdoor cultivation and greenhouse cultivation, the whole effort on the war on drugs is a facade because you're never going to be able to bring down the pricing to the point where you compete with the black market, which is much more drastically impacting, disproportionately impacted communities than more affluent communities. So in essence, if we only do indoor cultivation, it will only continue to, you know, the war on drugs will continue to affect those that have been affected most and not impact those that can afford to buy their way to legalization. So those are the three major issues that I foresaw in pursuing the effort in building out Lakeville, and that came in probably a 15-month effort of learning what it takes to build a cultivation facility, visiting, um, facilities from around the country, and then also learning what it costs to operate these things. To operate a 10,000-square-foot grow indoors, you're looking at about a, at, at 13 cents a kilowatt off gas, you're looking at about $60,000 a month in electricity bills. Can imagine what that does to the grid, and one of the problems we ran into in Lakeville is the demand is so high with just a few cultivations in that community that there is not enough gas supply to the industrial park net. In Columbia, gas has to come in. So all those problems identified, uh, I'm, I'm happy to say that there is a solution to these problems, and the solution, as I briefly mentioned, is outdoor cultivation. It doesn't solve all of the needs for our market, but it subsidizes it, seasonally subsidizes enough supply into the market at very low costs to make it, to address all of the problems we're facing environmentally, socially, economically. So I sort of just kind of want to preface and talk about the benefits of outdoor before I jump into my proposal. So the first thing about outdoor is it is seasonal. It's only a six-month, uh, harvest once a year. We start in May and we end in October, and so during the other months, nothing is happening. We're not doing anything on that land. It sits fenced in and enclosed. Startup costs are significantly lower. To build 50,000-square-foot greenhouse is about $10 million. To build 100,000-square-foot outdoor cultivation, just twice as large, costs $300,000. This makes it much more eligible for people with not as deep of pockets to actually get into cultivation. I'll repeat that. 50,000, 10 million, 100,000, 300,000. Meaning, on that 100,000, you're gonna produce twice as much as that 50,000 indoor for, what is it?
Thirty of the cost.
One thirtieth of the cost because it's 300,000 to 10 million. The amount of jobs we'll be creating, 50-plus jobs, uh, in this, in the proposal that I will be speaking of shortly. And then the other thing is revitalization of agriculture, I think, is really important. My generation guilty more than most, taking agriculture for granted, that the salad just shows up in front of them, that the grocery store always has groceries in it, produce in it, and they, every tomato and apple and banana look perfect every single time. These are things we, especially my generation in the Northeast and New England, really don't think much about, and I think cannabis and growing outdoor cannabis could, will start a revitalization in agriculture here in New England and especially in Massachusetts. And so my proposal in front of the board this evening is to pursue the parcel of land that the Four Daughters pursued initially, uh, but instead of greenhouse proposal, I'd like to propose a seasonal outdoor cultivation. And so what we did is I hired, we hired a civil engineer to take a look at this plot of land and what we predict we could potentially cultivate in this space seasonally, and I'll get right into that. But what we did was, we took a look at this site plan and we applied, um, the current regulations and bylaws to it, uh, which would include a wetland buffer and things like that, even though to, to my brief understanding, may not be applicable to agricultural growing, regardless of what, where it is industrial or not.
Just wetland.
So there's, there's a 100-foot wetland buffer and a 50-foot wetland buffer. And so as a, as a farmer, I guess we would risk potentially losing that crop because not growing it is a loss in and of itself. Does that make sense?
Your crop's gonna be jeopardized if it gets too moist.
That, that is true, but we looked at historical weather data here in Halifax and how they create the wetland buffers. So as long as that plain floods once every, I believe, 99 years, it's considered a wetland. And so for us as farmers, we actually would rather take the risk and plant on that land potentially and lose the crop than not plant it and for sure know we're not gonna get the crop. And so, but what, what I'm proposing this evening is we'll stay to all the boundaries based on as if it was industrially properly zoned. So taking a look at 111 River Street, um, it is zoned currently industrial, uh, which is allowed, uh, here in Halifax for adult-use marijuana cultivation. Industrial zoning is the appropriate zone. It's a 47-acre parcel that doesn't have any, uh, limitations or constraints to it in the sense of there are no schools, daycares, um, playgrounds, public parks, anywhere in this vicinity. And so we would not need anything other than a special permit. We would not require any variances for this, so forth and so on. And so...
Just, just to make you aware, there is a special meeting coming up where, um, citizens petition to change the requirements so that you had to be, uh, three or 500 feet away from a residential, from any residential property.
Is there residential around here?
Yeah. If you go further towards Plington, there's residential over here.
In Plington?
No, no. As you, as you travel downwards, towards Plington, you would see houses down that end.
And that is on when?
October 21st, 21st.
21st, special town meeting.
Okay, that's good to know. And so my proposal is to do one season outdoor grow a year, starting with 100,000 square feet, which is what the state allows us to do. What we would do is we would build a, a building somewhere around 15,000 square feet. That would be a storage of sorts for, for equipment, irrigation, uh, equipment, um, tractors, uh, labor materials, and also could be used as a vault, storage, drying facility for the seasonal harvest. And so what I, what I've determined, what I'm showing here is every one of these little boxes up here represent, represent 25,000 square feet. There's about 44,000 feet in an acre of land, and so 100,000 square feet is close to about 2.2 acres. And so what we're proposing, or what I would propose, is that next, next May, we would plant our first harvest and we would try, uh, to grow 100,000 square feet of cultivation outdoor for that season, uh, as I, as I show here. The other thing I do want to point out is that, uh, growing cannabis will really help revitalize the soils on this premise because cannabis is very well-known for pulling out certain, uh, metals out of the ground to revitalize nutrients into the soil. We obviously still would have to do soil testing for this site to determine whether it's, we would be able to grow in the dirt or whether we would have to basically set up pots on top of the dirt. What we're really trying to do is harness the sun and avoid that environmental impact. So, uh, the benefits to allowing us, or allowing an outdoor cultivation, uh, there are many, many benefits, but specifically to the town of Halifax and the state, uh, local job creation is a, is a very obvious one, but also stimulating other businesses for needs like fertilizers, dirt, uh, you know, labor of certain subcontractors. All these things would stimulate the local economy, uh, on a seasonal basis, but also the trickle-down effect of what a farm like this could produce for the state and all the jobs off of that, such as transportation and security and, uh, and, you know, all the different product assortments that these, that this flower could eventually go into. So job creation is a, is a large one. Increase municipal revenue. I did get a, a copy of the host community agreement that was presented to Four Daughters, and 3% of wholesale is exactly what we would agree to here in the community, and you'll see based on the numbers that I've put together, it is pretty substantial when you start letting this, uh, farm scale to what it potentially could be once we validate a minimum of the 100,000 square feet. And then lastly, obviously, agriculture and environmental revitalization. I know Halifax is a... I know Halifax is a, is a farming community and the history was a farming community. And so I think this sort of fits that. And I, and I'd like to see my efforts in changing the notion that cannabis is a manufacturing technique. It is farming. It's nothing more than another crop you can grow. I, you know, people who spend twenty million dollars on facilities don't want to hear that. That's the truth. And so, that brings me, I guess, to an important slide, which are our financial projections. And so, when you look, in 2020, we're estimating we could do a hundred thousand square feet for starters. The following season, we think we could do three hundred thousand square feet. Twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty, by 2022, we think we could grow the fifteen acres, which is about six hundred thousand square feet. It's estimated that we could produce about twenty-five hundred pounds per acre, based on our experiences with the team that we've partnered with in California. And you'll actually see some, the photos you see are the farms that we're a part of. They're some of the largest operations, legal operations. Is that not normal?
You mean the goats?
These are, they are one of the largest suppliers in the California market. They're a legal operator. But they, they, they're growing about twenty-five hundred pounds of material per harvest, per acre. And so when we took those estimates, looking at the very conservative numbers per price per pound of what we're seeing currently in the state of Massachusetts for wholesale, if we come in half of that cost, these are the revenues we're projecting. Right now, your average wholesale price in Massachusetts is somewhere between thirty-eight and forty-four hundred dollars a pound. If you look at my estimates, they're significantly lower. And I'm referencing this because the revenues could be even higher if pricing still is in flux by the time we're getting these harvests out. And so, we estimate that about nine point seven million dollars in revenue for the first harvest on a hundred thousand acres, generating at three percent, almost three hundred thousand dollars in, in fees to the community. When you start scaling that into what we're, what we have the ability to scale into on this parcel of land, we could see over a million dollars in, in tax fees here in the, for the town of Halifax. And that's again, on a seasonal basis. And the reason I point that out is, you know, sometimes it's a, you take on a lot more of responsibility when a business is around three hundred sixty-five days a year. We're not, you're gaining a full year of tax revenue in a shorter window. And so although it's a, you know, one point three million dollars in tax revenue, it's only in a six-month period. And so, our impact onto the community is half of that of any other operator.
Well, it would just be like any other farm in town.
Right. Well, I, sorry, I'm comparing myself to another cannabis operator, not to a farm. I apologize. And so, you know, if we were to scale to these fifteen acres, I think you could see tremendous revenue and tax for the community. But also just the flow of operations on a outdoor harvest that's seasonal, it's, it's not as fluid coming constantly in and out, in and out on traffic flow and things like that. The operation is much more calm and it's much more easier to operate than an indoor facility because, you know, you kind of just put the, put the crop into, into God's hands, sort of speak, and let it go from there, where in indoor facility, you're constantly monitoring, constantly changing and adjusting and controlling, almost playing that role of God. And so, our rollout is basically the years, the capacity of the farm we would like to utilize and what we think that would generate for us. I've included some photos. So the photos you're seeing here are actually of a thousand acre farm. So, to give you the, to give you an idea, if you're questioning whether we can grow on fifteen acres, the answer is very confidently, yes. We can grow on a thousand acres in California. Now their climate's a little better because they're year-round. But we've done testing here in the state of Massachusetts now for two years. We know we can grow the crop here for one season. And we know we can pull off the fifteen acres. That is not a concern of ours. Since I don't know what happened to this slide, but I'll just go through it on, on the presentation in front of you. Obviously, security, a state-of-the-art security facility is at the forefront of this operation and how that would look like. The majority of our expenditures to get this farm off the ground and operational goes towards security. It's one-third of our cost. This would include perimeter fencing, three hundred sixty-degree HD cameras, both daytime and nighttime, surveilling the entire perimeter of the farm. We would set it up strategically so every inch of the farm would be covered, both above and below. There would be access entry points around the facility. Everything else would be gated and fenced. The fencing would not be transparent. It would not be able to see through. It'd be, it'd be fifteen-foot fencing around the whole...
I don't think you can do that without...
Fifteen feet?
You're limited to six feet, I believe.
Really?
The bylaws that we have down.
We will have to look into a solution there. I was not aware of that. So we will, I still think a fence could be necessary, should be necessary. What we're trying to do is tuck the farm into the back away from the street as one solution as well. All shipments coming in and out would be anonymous, unreported. They would be tracked and monitored in our own system. But there is no cyclical delivery, import-export system, so nobody could catch on to anything. Everyone who visits the farm, every employee checks in on a daily basis into a manifest. Any visitors would be checked in and badged and things like that. Again, everything would be recorded. I'm sure you're familiar through previous presentation from Four Daughters, strict security regulations that are required at the state level. And so, you know, to sort of wrap it up, I really think that this state and this industry needs outdoor cultivation as a method to subsidize it, even if it's thirty or forty percent of its entire supply. And I just want to be on the right side of doing what I think is necessary for this industry and the environment and all the other, and all the things that I think indoor cultivation's limit. And I hope the town of Halifax would consider this proposal. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Obviously, we did a preliminary look at what we can do there. I didn't want to fully engage a civil engineer to start dissecting, you know, fencing and all of these things. What I, what I do know is we would go in front of the planning board for special permit. At that stage, we would really work out everything appropriately. We still need to do soil testing. We still need to do perk testing to see if we could get a septic on that site. But I really do believe this is a, a really special opportunity for us to do something historic here in the state. And there could be a lot of benefits, both here in Halifax and across the state, that we would create on a seasonal basis that could have annual impact.
Lakeville, what type of facility you have there?
So what will happen with Lakeville, our plan for Lakeville, is that that will become a processing facility only. It will not become an indoor cultivation. A processing facility meaning manufacturing. And so, the plan is to basically, this seasonal harvest of, here in Halifax, that material would then be sold to the manufacturing company for processing. And the intent is that we predominantly are not growing cannabis in Halifax for flower purposes because you start running into bugs and mites and all these things that are, wouldn't pass state testing. But when you process that down and through filtration methods, you could get all of the impurities out of the oils. And so those products would pass state lab tests appropriately. And so, this would not predominantly, predominantly these crops would be used for processing into oils to make other products.
We're missing one of our members, so I can't speak for him. At this point in time, no. Your presentation is well put. But I just say this one thing. Four Daughters, the reason that we need to have a feedback, a kickback from the local people is because it wasn't a greenhouse. It wasn't, it wasn't made to available. I understand the security guidelines, it's been thirty-five years in law enforcement. But, at the same time, you don't have a track record of having done this in any other community at this time?
So we, we have...
Mostly retail at this point.
Most, we, our predominant focus is retail. But as I said, we are working in partnership with a California operation. And, and together, we would tackle this opportunity. And we've been working with them now for three years in their efforts in California. I, I am not the farmer. We have, you know, my partner is the farmer on this front. And I know we have that experience to, to do this outdoors fairly confidently. This is a small-scale operation in the bigger picture of what we do in California.
Well, my, my feeling at this point in time is that even though we voted the town on Article Four to make marijuana legal for adults, the tide has sort of changed. We have a town meeting coming up. And depending on that vote, depending on kind of decision we're going to make at this table. Because if the people are speaking out saying that they don't want a facility, if the guy closed the residents, or closed to the highway or the road, then we're, our hands are tied in that sense.
I understand that. I can, I can understand.
So I'm not prepared to give you the kind of decision at this point.
And I was not here this evening expecting a decision. I do want to be very honest about that. My whole notion was to introduce myself, to introduce what we'd like to propose to the community. I'm not here to obstruct the community against its wishes. That's not my intent whatsoever. I hope that the community does see the benefits of something like this to the community and to the state industry as a whole. You know, I do believe there will be certain towns that are leaders on the outdoor cultivation front. And, and so I'm here to present that case for the town of Halifax and the benefits that it can bring because...
My, my concern is not so much the state that they'll, they flinch away too much for my taste and those type of things they're going to do. My concern is for the town of Halifax, you know, and how it will affect the residents here. You know, and we'll make the presentation. We'll have a hearing on it and see what the feeling is of all people on it. Because, as I stated, in a couple of weeks, we're going to have a town meeting. And that's changed from the last town meeting we had. No one was put it up. The only thing they were concerned about was that no retail in town.
Right.
The only reason that people felt comfortable with Four Daughters is because it was a greenhouse. You presented a different element.
Totally, I totally understand that, you know, I presented a whole nother spin on how I think it's done. And, you know, I'd love to present at the next opportunity to make my argument for why I think this is a safe approach.
Is there any benefit for us being present at that town meeting to answer questions that might arise?
I, I don't know whether or not the town would have to vote to allow you to speak.
Okay.
The body itself would have to vote.
And how many votes are going to be needed in order to change the bylaw?
It depends on how many people, two-thirds of the individuals.
And is there a quota of people that need to attend in order to...
A hundred people have to attend our town meetings. So you have to have two-thirds of the people to change the bylaw.
So a hundred people need to attend on the twenty-first, and then two-thirds need to vote in favor to change it. And if that does not pass to change, then the laws...
Bylaw, it's on the books, remain.
Okay. And so on the twenty-first, is the meeting to be held here? And who will be presenting on that topic?
People who have the petition.
The petition.
Who make the presentation.
I think your plan's ambitious to try to get this done for next year's growing season.
I was thinking the same thing because the process...
Oh, I know, I, I do understand it's ambitious. My goal is to... I know we could get something in the ground. And for us, it's more of a trial run to see how the plant reacts to the sun, to the soil, to the water, to the humidity. All these things are sort of a pilot run. So even if we do ten thousand or twenty thousand square feet next year, to scale into it, I think we can do fairly quickly the following year. So if not 2020, 2021 certainly. But 2020 is sort of like our test run. So that's why we're sort of staying to a minimum hundred thousand square feet. But ultimately, I would say, yes, my, my proposal is ambitious because you receive, you, you get a scale, economic scale. You know, if I grow, as I'm proposing here, six hundred thousand square feet one day, a hundred, that's a, that, that, that would be the equivalence of a hundred thousand square foot facility flipping harvest six times. You can only do a harvest about four times a year at best. And so that's a year and a half that I'm consolidating into five or six months.
If you're lucky.
And that hundred-year flood has happened a couple of times over the last ten years.
And that's why...
My basement has proof of that.
And that's why I'm proposing to do a hundred-foot buffer, not to tap into that. Again, I'm not, not here to ask for variances. Every time I've approached the community for licensing...
That's not an I've heard you, that they go to plant or conservation. So, so that's something that you would have to make a presentation to them. Our, our part of this, and to be honest with you, having been in law enforcement, have had to deal with individuals driving on the road, you know, that are high and you can't do anything about it because you can't test for it. But for myself, if I had to vote, I'd say no, for myself. But I'm not speaking for myself, I'm speaking for the town. And so we'll see what they have to say about it.
Understood.
Have you driven down River Street in South Halifax and seen the conditions of the infrastructure?
Infrastructure of...
The layers, the road.
I mean, it, it is, you know, slightly off the beaten path, in my opinion.
Well, I mean, the roads are not, haven't been paved for probably thirty years and it's oil and sand down that end.
Twenty-nine.
And, and, again, that is why this proposal is ambitious. It's because I, I do believe that it's, you know, it's so, you know, I didn't expect this petition of residential butters. And yes, there is residential, to your point. But like, you know, this parcel of land is so large...
Right, and it's five hundred feet from...
The line.
From lotline to...
Correct.
So that piece could be completely gone.
I understand. I, I, I totally understand. But my point on why we're proposing this effort in this location is because I felt like it would have the least impact on the community.
Well, that's one of the reasons that we signed the contract with Four Daughters at the time, because it would. But like I said, attitudes have changed. And we'll, we'll see what the feeling is.
Sure.
Thank you for the presentation. It's been enlightening.
Thank you, thank you for listening.
I just recently read the news that there were complaints about hemp being grown and the smell being waving from that particular crop.
So we do have solutions on odor control that we, we would propose. All of them being organic and natural. One of the things is, you know, we would plant an abundance of lavender fields in between to rather smell like lavender than cannabis. Another thing is, we worked very closely with the Sonoma Valley Disposal Company, sanitation company. And one of the things we discovered with them is, you know, there are enzyme misters that can kind of latch on to odor and sort of bring them back down. And so that odor never floats out into the climate. And that's what sanitation companies do a lot less.
There's a stream in a river not too far away from where you're planning on doing that, runoff. Runoff from any kind of cultivation causing any kind of problems?
None. There are no problems because we would not be using any form of pesticides or non-organic nutrient methods. And so everything is sort of a, we, everything would run on a drip irrigation system. So we're not wasting any additional water. And again, all, everything would be fed through those irrigation systems as a nutrient.
Good.
I just, I think to get something done for next year through all the boards that have public hearings is going to be extremely tight.
Well, that, that's an issue.
Look, I'm not, I'm not adamant on hitting these dates. I, I just want to see more outdoor cultivation in the state. Because again, it's an environmental thing and it's a social equity thing to me. As, those are the problems that I foresee and I think this is the solution. And if we don't do this, we will allow the black market to continue to flourish in the state of Massachusetts. We will never reach our full potential. And we're just, again, beating up on this earth. You know, 1% of all electricity consumption in the United States is for indoor cultivation. I mean, 1%. I know it doesn't sound like a lot, but you know, we have cars, we have houses, we have computers. You know, there's a zillion other things that require electricity. It's just, again, it's not sustainable. And for me, it's more of a mission than a business decision. I think this is better for the environment and it's not, and it's just for, to subsidize the demand that the market's going to have for all of these things that will evolve in this market.
Well, the bottom line is the benefits to your company and what you're going to do. It may benefit us depending on if your yields are proper and everything. You don't have a storm, you don't have a damp off.
Right.
I'm from the Midwest of all of our farming.
You know. The nice, the beauty is if it's not a perfect crop, again, because of its all-going, majority of it will go to processing. You know, like, again, when you walk into your grocery store and you see every tomato on the shelf in the produce section is perfect, that's not because every tomato's grown perfectly. It's because the nice ones moved there, the rest went to ketchup and tomato sauce and all those things. And so we're sort of in that realm where we're going to grow a product that's equally of good quality, just doesn't look as pretty.
Okay.
Charlie suggested that we just come and meet with you. And introduce ourselves and just wanted to let you know that, you know, local people.
We'll stay on top of the petition.
Well, I'm not too sure about people from Rochester.
What? That's how it's going.
Forchester sauce.
No, I bring that up because I think there are very few operators in the state of Mass. I've been doing this since 2016. There are very few operators that are originally from Massachusetts.
And you've aged well.
There have been some highs and there have been some, no pun intended. Make sure you write that. You know, it's a very difficult industry to be a part of, aside from what the news and what people.
Any business is.
You know, it's like, it's very, it's highly regulated, you know. You're twiddling your thumbs waiting for the state to kind of tell you what to do next. And you don't know if that will be two weeks, two years. So I know my 2020 plan is extremely ambitious, but I'm going to put it down on paper so we can at least try. And if I come up short, at least we know we'll get further than if I set it up to 2021. Because ultimately, we.
We're going to, we're going to process when all three members are here. Set up a date for a hearing. And if you want to come down at that time and make a presentation, then we'll see.
Excellent.
Absolutely.
Any other questions I can answer before? Well, thank you so much.
I do appreciate of your time.
How'd you get the ring?
Beat up an old lady on the block.
She was the mother of some.
My brother played with the Patriots, but he was one of the original players.
Were you Larry's brother?
Yeah.
I just dated myself, didn't I, by knowing Larry?
1960s.
Well, there was, it was just an article that Dan Shaughnessy wrote today, how Ron Burton's grandson played for UCLA.
Played for UCLA, yeah.
I was shocked.
Well, they grew up across the street from my brother's house. My first move, he had the Burton's.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Oh, wow. Actually, when I saw the name.
From Framingham.
Right. Well, when I saw the name, I said, you know, I.
Yeah, well, he was my older brother.
That was a nice name.
But passed away just recently.
Sorry to hear that.
Here's my card, but it should be 781 and I'll be getting new cards very soon.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you for your time.
Safe drive back. Because we do need the revenue. We might get a ticket out.
I saw the moment I came into Halifax, there was a police officer on the side of the floor.
It was pretty funny, a little kid was not happy to be here.
The look on his face.
And of course, I'm going, when I was a kid, I had his haircut. I mean, that was something like my hair.
That's why I called him a Marine. That was a Marine cut.
His facial expression.
Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We got one more thing?
We still got a reporter in here?
We do.
You just like the highly contracted and then the recycling.
Two copies that need to be signed.
Do we need to vote that or?
We do. I'll move it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, we have recycling abatements.
You got the page right there and the nine little papers on your folders.
The blue book?
Yeah, it's the, you can go back right behind the little.
That was quite a compliment he gave. It was talking about they have discombobulated on Wesley. He gave us a compliment, said the board runs smooth. That's because Gordon's on it, right? If Gordon wasn't here, it wouldn't be smooth like this.
If I wasn't here, you wouldn't have a meeting right now.
Yes, I would. I could meet myself. I'd just help bring a reflective mirror in and talk to myself. Okay, that's everything on this that I could find.
Yeah, but you had to do the second events.
That's what I say. So we have bill number 2325, letter from duly disposable service received 9/25/19. What's the date it had to be, it should have been in here on the 5th? And then we have one from lunin wage services, it was October 2nd to get it in.
I'm going to vote with you because I want to have the meeting to talk about the recycling stuff.
I would, I would vote in denying it at this time because of the lateness of the presentation.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay, so I hope you got a sign.
And when you, next time you put my pitch in the paper, make sure you spell the name right.
Oh, is this Belmer?
I'm only joking.
Thanks, you too.
Be safe.
All right, all right. Just always nice and neat. I want to get, get, get a vote before we let him go.
What? I thought we didn't vote.
The dirt?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we will hold off on those executive sessions until next time.
Yeah, I'll do it.